Mine is Nick. No, it's not.
Okay. Good evening. We're going to call the order, the Marion Common Council meeting. Today's June 3rd, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the Marion City Council chambers here in City Hall. And before we start tonight, we're going to change it up just a little bit. As those of you that are watching at home, or those in the audience might have observed, the graphic tonight behind me, or on your YouTube screen. If you're not sure who that is, you might not have lived here very long. As everyone knows, that's Ed Breen. And Ed Breen recently passed away. I can't even encapsulate the words about Ed Breen, and what he's done in our community, and the voice that he's had for so long. So I've asked Councilman Klein to say a few words about Ed Breen. He probably knows him better than most of us up here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I met Ed first day on my job at the newspaper in 1973. It was in the summer. And since then, known him, A, as a boss and a colleague, as a neighbor for several years, as a friend since 1973, and as a mentor, even not at the newspaper. He was just one of these guys that cared about the community. In talking to other folks who knew him, one of our other editors who's not here, who was very good in his own right, said that Eddie taught him how to be, how to make, how this could be a community newspaper. And he was in and of and for the community. He got the community talking, both with his columns and his reporting at the paper. Then for years, over at the radio station, he did it in Fort Wayne as well. This is the time of year when, when we lived across the street from each other. We'd share porches and we'd open the Mai Tai season. He would have a friend who would come in. He was a brother Patrick, who was, I can't remember what order he was. But anyway, he would come in, and I'd get a caller, yell at me from the porch, "Klein, get over here. We've got to open the Mai Tai season." On the other hand, he's the only person who ever, he said he's the only person who ever threw a coffee mug across a newsroom at someone. It was me. And it still had coffee in it. And neither one of us could remember. But he was, he taught, he got the community talking. He got the community listening. He, he built a chunk of this community that the community probably doesn't even recognize. People do things, say things, hear things, think things, that at one time or another Eddie would have talked about. And we go to, we're going to be going to 1812 again. That wouldn't have happened without him and the little Colonel Marty Lake. I know there are other people here who knew him and worked with him, before I get too choked up, who could say things. This, this is serendipitous. Audrey, his daughter, posted this on Facebook. And it's something that Eddie posted last year, last May. He says, and this is how he would start, when he was going to say something genius, he would, he very often would start out, as he does here, "Not to get too deep here, but there is a beauty in the living..." Hang in there, folks. I'll get there. "There's a beauty in the living, and also in that which has run its course and has settled into an orderly transition. Just a little something to ponder on a trip to the woodlands here in Indiana." Thank you.
Just another one of those Ed Breen moments, right? We all have had many of those Ed Breen moments, and we're going to miss those. So I appreciate that, Councilman Klein, and... Yeah, absolutely. All right, we're going to move on with the regular meeting and begin with prayer. Pastor Lucas Binkard from Bethel Worship Center is here tonight to lead us in prayer. Thank you for coming tonight. Just hit the red button on the microphone.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you first and foremost for who you are. It is our privilege to honor you. And we thank you for the gift of your son, Jesus, and for the Holy Spirit to lead and guide us. I thank you for this council, and I thank you for every decision that they are going to make, and for the business, the business that they're going to discuss tonight. And I pray that you would give them wisdom and clarity of mind and speech. And I pray that, Lord, that we would all remember that it is an honor for us to serve in this capacity in this city. And I thank you for this community. I pray for favor and blessing on every decision going forward. And I thank you, God, for everything that you do for us, even when we don't even realize it. I thank you for the life of Ed, who has gone on to be with you. And I pray that, God, you would help us honor him in this community by getting the community talking in a different way, Lord. I thank you, Jesus, for this time. I pray that it's blessed. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. And Councilman Jim Brunner is going to lead us in the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, going into roll call, Madam Deputy Clerk. Here.
Marshall.
Here.
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 Here. And moving into tonight's Community Spotlight, Nathaniel Beck, come on up. All the way to the very front. I didn't tell them this part. Come all the way up here. For those that haven't seen Community Spotlights, if Nathaniel's ever seen one, thanks for coming.
Of course.
Yeah, nice to finally meet you. So we like to highlight various things in our community, whether it's businesses, and just groups and entities, students, or any of our citizens, really. But tonight, we are spotlighting Nathaniel Beck. And to be honest with you, Nathaniel, I had already asked him to be Community Spotlight. And I had no idea that you were the valedictorian when I asked you. I went to the graduation in Marion on Sunday. My niece graduated. And there you are, the valedictorian. I said, "Go figure." This guy, I don't know what he has not accomplished at Marion High School. And we are just so proud of you, the council, the community. You know, there's a lot of great things in our community. But the people are what make it the best. And you are just graduating high school, but I know you're going to do great things. And we're hoping, and crossing our fingers, you come back and do great things in our community as well. I'm just going to read a little bit, just summarize a few things. I had Nathaniel send me some things about himself, and it was more than one page. So I appreciate you doing that. I summarized it. So I'm just going to read this. So Nathaniel Beck is a distinguished student athlete, recognized for his exceptional academic and athletic achievements. Graduating as valedictorian with a 5.1 GPA. So you never had less than an A+? Oh, my goodness, that's great. Nathaniel is a National Merit Commended Student, AP Scholar with Distinction, and a 2025 Indiana Association of School Principals Academic All-Star. He was honored with the IHSA Foundation's 2024-2025 Eugene C. Cato Memorial Scholarship, and named a Rising Star of Indiana. I think there was only just a handful of people in Indiana that got that, right? Forty. Forty seniors in the entire state, and we have one of them here in Marion. So that's amazing. A dedicated leader, Nathaniel served as Senior Class Officer, President of the National Honor Society, Secretary of Mu Alpha Theta, and co-founder/leader of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. He has also contributed to an 11th place team finish at the 2022 Mu Alpha Theta National Convention. In athletics, Nathaniel earned 16 varsity letters across four sports, soccer, cross-country wrestling, and track and field. Serving as team captain in each, he is a four-time state qualifier, 11 times regional qualifier, two times semi-state qualifier. And this has been updated since, but a one-time state qualifier now, right? You're going to state?
Yeah, it's on there.
Is it? Okay. I said, I thought I put it in there.
He did have a...
You know what? Yeah, yeah, you're right. Oh, my gosh. I just can't keep up. You have so many things. I did say that, four-time state qualifier. But yes, the one I'm talking about is the one coming up here. Let me finish all of these things here. Seven times All-North Central Conference Honoree, and a multiple-time recipient of team awards for performance and mental attitude. His leadership and dedication exemplify the balance of academic excellence and athletic commitment. And yes, so his four-by-four, is it four-by-four, right?
Four-by-eight.
You're four-by-eight. Oh, jeez, that's even worse. That hurts thinking about it. His four-by-eight team is going to state. They've got first place at regionals. So not only is he balancing all of these sports, which is a lot of time and commitment, but he's excelling at those, and also never getting anything less than an A+, in fact, more than an A+ because of a 5.1 GPA. I can't overstate how amazing that is. And of course, stay humble, but we're really proud, and you should be really proud of yourself. And I'm sure your parents and your family are very proud. But our whole community is very proud of you. I've been Facebook friends with Alan for a long time, so I've kind of watched you grow up a little bit on Facebook. That's the advantage. But you're like, "Who's this guy talking," right? But no, it's been really neat just to watch you grow up from afar, and just hear and see all the accomplishments you've made. So really proud of you. Would you like to say anything? Make any comments?
Thank you to my family. They're the reason I'm here, and I've done all these things. So I love you guys.
All right. And yeah, absolutely. And he, he does, they live in District 3. So Councilwoman Devine, you want to say anything special, being the District 3 representative?
Thank you. And I went back and talked to them as well, but super excited for you. And we're looking forward to hearing the next things going on. So congratulations.
She's only one of 40 council districts in the state that can say that she has a Rising Star of Indiana. So thank you so much for coming tonight. Thank you, parents. Thank you, Alan. I've reached out to him and connected with him, and we just appreciate all you're doing. And so tell us, where are you going to college?
I'm going to Purdue University for Chemical Engineering.
Chemical Engineering, okay. So that sounds pretty important. What kind of chemical engineering area are you wanting to go in?
I'm not sure specifically. It could be developing new materials, or working on recycling or renewable energy.
Okay, sounds good. Well, you picked a great university. I'm glad you're sticking with Indiana, and you're a drive away to come back to all the basketball and football and all the sporting events, because you've got a younger brother here, right?
Oh, yeah.
So you're going to come back and support all his athletic events and all that?
Of course.
Good deal. Okay. Well, appreciate you coming in. One more round of applause for Nathaniel. So we're going to get a photo with you. It's picture time. Yeah, and that's probably just like the readers, for these older people, that's a Reader's Digest version of it, too. Okay. Switching it up a little bit to City Employee Spotlight, which officially now, I guess we could say it's Former City Employee Spotlight. Retired Police Sergeant Sean Sizemore. And so Sean, where are you at in the audience? You got to come all the way up. It's part of the gig. So as he's walking up, I will say, he is also a City Council President or Town Council President. And he gave up a little bit of that meeting tonight to come to ours. The Town Council President and Van Buren, right? Upland?
You're fired.
Look.
Upland.
Upland, my bad. It's the same side. I'm from Marion. It's the same side of the county. Upland, my bad. I was just checking. Upland, I know you're Town Council President. I've got enough business going on here. I can't follow Upland. Anyways, Sean recently retired from Marion Police Department. Yesterday was technically his last official day as a city employee. And he's done a lot of things. I'm going to read something here in a minute that Chief Gilbert sent me. But it was, it was a no-brainer, not only because you're retiring, but I know Sean as well. A lot of us here know Sean. Done a lot of things, spent 20 years dedicated to this city. I first met Sean through the Grant County Crime Stoppers Board. He was our coordinator for some time, and got to know him there. And I always had a respect for him as a, just a, just a real-deal, straight shooter, hard worker. And we're just really glad that you put 20 years for the city, and we are honored to have you. So I'm going to read what Chief Gilbert wrote. The last paragraph's on the screen. It couldn't fit all of it, so I'm going to read it right off my computer here. It says, "Sean Sizemore has been a fantastic servant leader for Marion Police Department and the citizens of Marion for two decades, and that after serving our great country in the Marine Corps. Sean served in several important roles, including patrol officer, detective, evidence technician, patrol sergeant, and honor guard commander. No matter the job, he was reliable, accountable, and effective, accepting and dominating every challenge and tough assignment. Countless citizens have been helped by virtue of Sean's commitment to service and duty. Every candidate seeking a job in law enforcement says during his or her interview that the reason they want to be a police officer is to, quote, 'help people.' Sean said it too, but he actually meant it sincerely, and proved that sincerity literally hundreds of times by his actions, most of the time without fanfare or recognition. Sean's personnel file is packed full of commendations, far too many to itemize here. What is noteworthy about all of them is that is guaranteed. That when presented, Sean will always respond with a variation of, 'It was really nothing, chief. I was just doing my job.' And he meant it. As a partner, Sean's fidelity to his fellow officers and their safety was paramount. If you were on Sean's squad and needed backup, you knew he would be there, no matter the danger or risk to himself. Further, this officer willingly stood up to career violent criminals who others feared in order that good people could feel and be safer. Sean accomplished many noteworthy things in his career, but his contribution to the creation, professionalism, and leadership of the Marion Police Department Honor Guard stands out. Sean was committed to honoring our fallen and retired partners and their families with distinguished services when they passed. Importantly, this officer was recruited to serve as an integral part of the statewide team tasked with providing dignified funeral services for police officers killed in the line of duty in Indiana, and still contributes in this capacity. Sean also participated in dignified services at the National Police Memorial Ceremonies in Washington, DC. In summary, Sean served with distinction and has been a fantastic partner. He will be missed dearly, but on behalf of the entire department, we wish him well as he begins the next part of his journey away from Marion Police Department. And we know that no matter what vocation he chooses, Sean will always bleed Marion Police Department blue, and will always be our partner. Congratulations, and thank you for your dedication, Sean. You served well." And that came from Chief of Police David Gilbert. Thank you, Chief, for that. So we just wanted to say thank you for your service. And we did actually have a flag raised over City Hall all day today. And we'd like to present you with that flag. It's a three-by-five flag that we flung over City Hall for you to take your last day, or your first day as a civilian. And we appreciate your service. Would you like to say anything real quick?
You have to now give me the mic. Just, you know, I think Chief Gilbert, you know, 20 years ago, he gave me the opportunity to do the greatest job in the world. Through the last 20 years, we, I've seen a lot of bad stuff, death and destruction that the normal person doesn't want to see. And we carry that with us day in and day out. And my goal throughout my whole career was just to help people. Unfortunately, we have to take somebody's freedom, or even worse. And I've met a lot of great people in this community, potentially on the worst day of their life. But they have no idea how they touched my life, and I remember that day as if it was yesterday. And again, I got the opportunity to get my first badge from Chief Gilbert, and I had the distinct opportunity to get my last badge from him, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So of course, we got to get a picture now. Did you bring anyone with you tonight?
No.
All by yourself? Okay. Can you come up front and center? Chief, you got to get in on this one. Chief, you have to get in on this one. Or anyone else.
Hey, before the picture, before the picture. Thank you, thank you.
Come on up. You're fine. You earned it. All right, here, let's, let's even this up a little bit. Don't stack up in the hall like that, guys. That's dangerous.
I was stacking up.
Excellent. Thanks, Sean. Appreciate it, sir. Appreciate you, sir.
Thanks. Enjoy. Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks for your service, sir. Thank you, buddy.
Good seeing you. See you around. Talk to you later. Yeah, be on the lookout for him. I won't say the name, but he works for a local bank. And he's a repo guy, so if you're not making your payments, you might be seeing him soon. All right. Back to Ed. All right. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda for the Approval Minutes Regular Meeting and Executive Session Meeting, May 20th, 2025. Consideration of pre-approved claims and consideration of claims. Anyone have any comments? Otherwise, if not, I would accept a motion.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second. Motion by Councilman Calgill, a second by Councilman Klein. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Abstain.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Abstain.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Abstain.
Whitney.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. All right, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? I will start out real quick. I am the Vice President of the Marion Redevelopment Commission. So the reason I was gone last meeting is some of us commissioners took a trip to a convention. It's called the ICSE Convention in Las Vegas. It was a two-and-a-half-day trip, very quick, where a group of us went out there. We used to, as a city, go there 10-plus years ago, or eight-plus years ago. And for those who don't know, that convention actually is what helped garner some of the development down south in Marion, the whole area where Myers and some other developments. It's a huge convention where there's retailers, developers, that come from all over the country and the world, really. And so we took a trip out there. A lot of great meetings. Some cool stuff that might be coming our way to the city, and I think the trip was well worth it. Made a lot of great connections, talked to a lot of developers, and we're just super excited. I know the mayor was there for a short moment, too, and sat in a couple of the meetings. But I share that just because, you know, a lot of people don't see the behind-the-scenes of what's going on every day. You might see a snippet on Facebook here and there, or you hear a rumor here and there. But I could tell you the gas pedal is down, and it's down pretty hard right now. There's a lot of things when it comes to developments and talking to developers, they don't want things out until the ink is dry. But I can say the mayor's doing a fantastic job. And there's a lot of stuff, we'll say, for the young kids, a lot of things cooking on the fire right now, right, Mayor? And I'm just really excited. I came back just like super pumped about some of the things that we talked about and some of the meetings that we had. So just wanted to give you a quick recap. That was why I was gone. But also, it was kind of a committee report from the Redevelopment Commission. Any other committee reports? All right. Councilwoman Devine, do you have one?
I do.
I was just waiting.
Yep. I was waiting to see if anybody else had one. The Board of Works met yesterday. And I missed some of the beginning of the meeting about the bus switchouts from Transportation Department, but I assume those were approved. And then the HVAC control system bid opening, which I'm sure they took under advisement, and we'll get more information about that after the next meeting. They did agree to an easement that the city was working on through the Engineering Department and approved the bid recommendations for for the paving and for the Buck Sports Complex parking lot paving. And then they had a discussion about additional unsafe structures and are working their way through a new process with those, as well as kind of approved a policy internally that they're going to use as a way to prioritize which unsafe structures are the most unsafe in that they should be demolished as quickly as possible versus ones that maybe have some structural that have interested landowners that are still working on them and working their way through those so as to best use the city's demolition dollars and as well as trying to work with the homeowners to get them back up to code and to a habitable condition. So that was an interesting conversation. Glad to see them working that way and trying to find the right ones to bring down for safety purposes and the other ones to get them repaired at the level that they should be. So that was the Board of Works.
Great, thank you so much. Any other committee reports? Yeah, Councilman Brunner.
Park Board, we're happy to announce that after some very cold weather last week, we had some warm weather, and we finally got the splash house open. And now that the kids are all out of school, it's going to be open again because we're expecting really nice, warm temperatures this week. So get your youngsters out there and have them enjoy it. But the splash house is now officially open.
Great, that's exciting. Such an asset to our community, too. All right, any other committee reports? All right, we'll move on to unfinished business, starting with General Ordinance 10-2025 Vacation of Portion of Public Way, third reading.
An ordinance vacating a portion of the alley in the 1700 block of West Sixth Street. Vincent Miskovich petitions to vacate a portion of Geneva Avenue Alleyway in Marion, Indiana, citing various reasons. The petitioner, Vincent Miskovich, is the owner of the property at 1718 West Sixth Street, Marion, Indiana. Miskovich is seeking to vacate alleyway adjacent to lots number four through 29 and lot number 34 in Parkersburg addition. The two property owners have not yet consented. The reason for the alley vacation is that the alleyway is unnecessary for access to adjacent landowners, emergency vehicles, or utilities. The city will no longer maintain the area, transferring maintenance responsibilities to the petitioner, and the alleyway does not contribute to neighborhood growth or public benefit. Speaking, Attorney Joseph Certain.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I don't have a lot to say, a lot I can add, this being the third meeting, third reading of this. I think you've all heard it. You probably are all aware that this is a dedicated alleyway on the west side of town through what's now a forest that has never been improved and would have no ill effect on or adverse consequences to any access from any of the emergency vehicles or the public way. So I'd kindly ask that you approve the this de-approve this alleyway.
Thank you. Any council members with questions or statements, comments?
Mr. President, I have met a couple different times with the neighbors, especially Mr. Brown. Express his displeasure with this vacation. It does affect him in a way. There's been ongoing violations in that alleyway. It's taken up time from our city administration, from Mike Graff, from Jerry Fosnite and so forth. I would like to see if this alley was vacated, that there would be 100% agreement between the neighbors for this to go through. Seeing that there's not, there's 50% of the people that are against it in reality. And I personally cannot move forward with this myself. So I don't know if others have looked at that property or not, but there is issues with that, ongoing issues. There's been issues in the past. And so I, for one, will not be voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kane. Any other council members? Councilman Klein.
Yeah, thank you. The lawyer in me says something that Mr. Certain had said earlier, that our issue isn't what the neighbors think, want, or have done or have seen, but it's, excuse me, but it's just the alley. But in the back of my head, I also have the thought, and I've been out there. I've wandered around. I haven't talked to anybody like Councilman Kane had, but I drove out there and got out and looked around a little bit as much as, and you know, what we heard at the public hearing and beyond wasn't really far-fetched. And while the issue may not be what kind of neighbor he is or what kind of business owner, whatever he may be, the fact that sticks in my head that there are still two folks there who don't agree with this, and that troubles me. Because if this is vacated, what's to stop that from becoming like the rest? And still, again, another headache for Mike Graff and Jerry Fosnite and those folks. I'm torn. Yeah, as for an alley, that's the issue before us, and I understand that. But it's also a neighborhood, and I just have a hard problem with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Klein. Any other council members? I do have a question. So with this vacation, just so I understand better, this would hate to say the word benefit, but this would also vacate the alleys for the neighbors. Is that correct?
Pardon me. That is correct. However, we're talking here about four lots along the side of the alley and one lot on the street, on the south end of the street of Park Avenue. Otherwise, all the property in and around the alley, from Geneva Avenue all the way through, is owned by the petitioner here, Mr. Miskovich. Vacation of the alley will not affect adversely anybody's access as far as the comments from Mr. Brown at the last meeting. His comments generally revolved around his concern with the children and kids in the neighborhood being disturbing to him. That has nothing whatsoever to do with the alley or the alley vacation. That will not change. If he has problems with the children, there are ordinances that he can bring to bear to have that remedied. But that didn't have anything to do with the vacation of the alley.
Thank you for that. Any other council members? Vice President Fordice.
Yes, and I understand where Dave's coming from and Mike's coming from. But here's my point on the issue is, right now with the alleyway, anybody can travel through that, all those lots, towards the back of those houses. I mean, right now, it doesn't stop anybody from driving down through there if possible. With this vacation, it stops that. There's nobody allowed to transfer through the back of those properties. It actually deeds half of the alley to each property owner. So not only would it stop people from traveling through that alley, it would deed half of the alley to Mr. Brown. And I don't see where that would be a negative impact, in my opinion. So that's my say on that, and I wanted to make sure to clarify that.
Thank you for that.
I will also
Go ahead.
reiterate that there's two adjacent landowners that are against this, and that's enough for me to vote no against this. If there was everybody in agreement, I would certainly agree with you, Mr. Fordice, on moving forward with this vacation. But when you have more than one, you have two property owners that are against the vacation, I certainly can't move forward with this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other council members? Was there somebody else?
Okay.
Is somebody else that wanted to speak? It's not. Is he, if that's Vincent, though, is that Vincent? Go ahead, turn your microphone on.
Excuse me. I'm Randy Miller from RMA Surveying and Engineering, and I prepared the survey. I've known and worked for both Lloyd Brown and Mr. Miskovich. There is an ongoing running feud. It's as bad as Hatfield and McCoy's, maybe worse. The area before Mr. Viscous had the property, people throw some trash back there. His concept is if I can own all the property, I can clean it up. And that's important to me. Mr. Fordice is correct that alley runs a block long from Park Avenue to Geneva, which all of that is heavily wooded. Most of the feud between the two comes because of the children riding motorcycles and stuff through the woods. And Mr. Brown didn't like it. Again, I want to understand that. I've worked for Mr. Brown. He owns that four lots there. There are there's almost 40 lots in there. Mr. Brown owns four lots and has a house on there. The other person, Mr. Weir, has an end lot that is no improvements, and I wasn't aware that he had objected. I don't know, did he formally write an objection? Did he show up and object? I don't know. I know the only one who showed up was Mr. Brown. And again, there's an underlying problem. My point is, Mr. Miskovich's efforts to vacate this isn't going to hurt anybody. In fact, Mr. Brown is going to gain 132 feet wide by eight and a quarter, half the south half of the alley. And it is correct. Once that alley is vacated, no one can go through there. There's not even utilities down through there because it's impassable. His efforts to do this are indeed, I think, pure, and it is to clean the place up. But he's restricted with doing something when he's got through the middle of his property, an alley, 16-and-a-half-foot alley. So I just want to reiterate to you that even though there are two landowners, one of them, I'm not aware he's objected. I don't know if he's filed an objection. If he hasn't, then it's a moot point. Secondly, there are only five lots out of, I don't know how many there are, 40, and that is kind of disproportionate. Yeah, one person lives there, Mr. Brown, and he's the only one. And again, there has been serious, serious issues between him and Mr. Miskovich. So I hope that you take that in consideration.
Thank you. Any other council members? So I wasn't here at the last meeting. I did watch it on YouTube and heard a little bit of it. Kind of where I stand is is the objection an objection to the actual vacation of the alleyway or is it an objection to the owner that's requesting this vacation? And it's difficult sometimes, even in our own lives, to separate the feelings from the facts. In my opinion, and what I'm getting from this or my interpretation, is there's a lot of hard feelings. A couple of years ago, I requested a variance to put a taller fence in my yard, and I had to go through all the zoning and all of that in my backyard. Fortunately, nobody objected. But it would have hurt nobody. Actually, it helped me. But it hurt nobody. But I couldn't imagine if I had ticked off a neighbor a couple of times, or even if it was legit, even if I did break local ordinances, to object to the fact that I want to put an eight-foot fence up. That's where I'm at. So I'm speaking from my own experience of going through not an alley vacation, but just a change in a variance of a property. And is this an objection to the idea or the objection to the owner of having that idea? And then my other thought is, I'm sure this probably wasn't pro bono. Was this a paid effort? I don't know if you can tell me or not. If it was paid, I'm just saying that it sounds like Mr. Miskovich maybe fronted the bill for this that then allows everyone else to get some of this alleyway? Are they, they're going to end up absorbing this alleyway? So in my view, I almost see it as a favor. Like, I'm paying for this, and I'm going to benefit from it, but my neighbors are going to benefit from it, too. And I do understand, and I thought about this ahead of time with, does the vacation of this alleyway actually maybe help what some of the issues have been? I don't know. But then I separate out if there are issues with motorcycles or trash or whatever, then that needs to be enforced on its own leg. That needs to be handled, tackled, taken care of separately from the idea of vacating an alleyway. And so while I'm upset that we have neighbors that are upset with each other and they're wanting to object, I'm just, I have to pull my feelings out and go, what's the literal request here? And it's to vacate an alley that has been abandoned, essentially. It's urban, it's been abandoned in an urban environment that could potentially benefit all of the neighbors. So that's where my opinion is. So I will be voting in favor of it, but I will say, my hope is that moving forward, there can be some peace within that neighborhood and whatever other issues there are stemming from other incidents that those can be put behind and/or the neighbors can find a new respect to respect each other's boundaries. With that, I'll open for any more comment or a motion. Councilmember Brunner.
Mayor, do you care to comment on this at all?
Okay.
Mr. President, if you're ready for a motion.
Go ahead.
Move that we deny General Ordinance Number 10, 2025.
Motion by Councilman Kane to deny the General Ordinance 10- Motion by Councilman Kane to deny the General Ordinance 10-2025. Is there a second? Not hearing a second? Without a second, I guess the motion dies. I would entertain another motion or a comment.
Mr. President, I make the motion to pass General Ordinance 10-2025.
I have a motion to pass General Ordinance 10-2025. Do I have a second? I have a second by Councilman Calgill. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
No.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
No.
Devine?
Aye.
Witten?
No.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. General Ordinance 10-2025 has passed. And moving on to General Ordinance 11-2025, Adding Grant Administrator for Transportation, Second Reading and Public Hearing.
An ordinance fixing the maximum salary of appointed officers and employees and the annual payment of flex dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars, to the non-contractual full-time employees of the City of Marion, Indiana for the year of 2025. The City of Marion Department of Transportation goal is to hire someone for this position to be trained by Chuck Martindale for a few months before retirement. This position is very important to acquire. Transportation runs on eighty-five percent grants. Speaking, Jeff Edwards.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Edwards.
Yeah, good evening. We've been going over this for a while, so we know how important this job is to the success of transportation. So we just need to get this person in and get him trained with Chuck. So I'm just asking to get this passed, so we can get started.
Great, thank you. Any council members with any questions or comments before we go to public hearing? All right, thank you. If you want to have a seat, we're going to go ahead and open it for public hearing. If you would like to speak for or against this ordinance, please make your way to the microphone. Not seeing anyone make their way up there. Last chance. All right, we're going to close the public hearing, not seeing anyone make their way to the microphone. And I would entertain any other discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules on General Ordinance 11-2025.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Calgill, a second by Councilman Kane. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, rules have been suspended. I'd entertain another motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to now make a motion that we pass General Ordinance 11-2025.
Motion to pass by Councilman Calgill, second by Vice President Fordice. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, General Ordinance 11-2025 has passed. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. And moving on to Additional Appropriation 5-2025, railings for waterways, Second Reading and Public Hearing. However, before we move into that, I did get a request. It was yesterday, or yesterday evening. So Randy, actually, if you want to come up to the microphone and just let them know the request that you have.
Good evening. The last council meeting, we were asked to table it, and Mr. Kane decided to move it forward. To pack it in front of you is what DNR finally sent to me that needs to be filled out. It is a quite lengthy process just to replace this handrail. Quite lengthy. After all, it took DNR a week and a half to even return a phone call. So how this process works is we fill all this out, I send it back to DNR, DNR approves it, and then we have to hold a public hearing from anyone across the street from said handrail area. That goes back to DNR, then DNR gives you the approval to build it. So had we built it, there would have been a healthy fine. We'd have tore it down, so I'm glad we did not do that. But what I'm asking, there's no way I'll have this paperwork completed. There's just no way. Between DNR taking however long they want to take, if any of you've ever worked with DNR, it's like pulling eye teeth. They don't want to return phone calls, they only want to email, then they don't want to email what you're asking them. They just want you to send your two hundred dollars and fill out the paperwork. So this is going to be a lengthy process. I will complete my portion of it as fast as possible, get it sent in, and then we'll be waiting on DNR.
Well, I appreciate you sharing that with us. We will work the channels and the best we can to try and help speed this up. I do know, I'm not going to try and speak for them, but I know our Representative Lori Goss Reeves and State Senator Andy Zay sometimes have some liaisons that can help, so maybe we can pull them on that and see if they can kind of help fast-track this being a railing. It's not like we're building a structure here.
Correct.
And so we'll do everything we can. I'll make some calls and see if we can fast-track this as best we can, because, I mean, if this was in the middle of the winter, maybe one thing, but you know, this is going to be out all summer if this is going to
Yes, sir.
Take that application process. So go ahead, Councilman Klein.
So if we table this, like we talked about, it still keeps it alive. We don't have to start from scratch? Or does this red tape mean we have to start from square one again?
We have to follow their specific directions to a T, or they'll make you start all over.
So what we have before us now?
Means nothing.
Okay, great, button it into oblivion, then.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, could we not pass it to the third reading? If we're not ready by then, we could hold it off then, though, right, or no?
If the third reading is a public hearing, then no, we cannot.
No, the second is a public.
Okay, because we can't open it to the public until DNR has the other information.
I would feel more comfortable doing it today, yeah. Can you turn your mic on?
Yeah, and the reason that I wanted to table this on the first reading was because with DNR specifications, everything's going to change on the construction of what his appropriation is for. Because his appropriation is just to replace the handrail with a diverter. DNR tells you the way you have to do it. So then he may have to get new bids to redirect the process of what DNR wants him to comply with, so.
So Ian, I'm glad you mentioned that. I was going to speak to this about whether we table this or wrote it down. I guess maybe it doesn't make a huge difference, because, you know, even the executive summary talks about the ADA. Technically, this is an ADA ramp. It is, we'll say grandfathered in. Maybe it's, we try to say it's handicap friendly.
The whole wording needs to be changed, correct.
So I really, where I'm at, and maybe our counsel, Marty can chime in on this, is, you know, do we table it, or we just vote it down and then bring a whole fresh new one back once you have everything buttoned up? Any thoughts on that, counsel?
Probably be cleaner just to start over, but it could be done either way. I'll leave it up to your discretion, but I would suggest at this point, just starting over.
So it's my opinion that we vote it down. I don't, I'm not a big fan of tabling, because when I table something, we assume it's coming back. And so voting it down would be my preference. That way, we have a fresh additional appropriation number, fresh executive summary. We start over with the first reading all the way through that whole process, just like the DNR said. Because I'd hate to table it, because then when we bring it back, it's back at Second Reading, Public Hearing, and it just kind of circumvents some of that process the DNR might require, so.
So would you accept the motion to deny additional appropriation 5-2025?
I would accept that.
Then you got it.
Okay. All right, got a motion to deny by Councilman Klein, a second by Councilman Kane. Just, I was picking, no, I knew where I was, just deciding. Councilman Kane, any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, so additional appropriation 5-2025 is voted down. We look forward to seeing this come back, and again, I'll try and connect and see if we can make some connections and speed this up for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, additional appropriation 6-2025, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, First Reading.
In appropriation appropriating certain funds in the amount of thirty-three thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-four cents for the CCD fund, the City of Marion Engineering Department is requesting the unused portion of the balances from 2024 be allowed to be transferred into the 2025 appropriation accounts. The MVH Road Repair, CCD Fund, Wheel Tax, and Local Road and Street. These transferred appropriations will be used for paying for services that were carried over from 2024 that were not encumbered, and to all for the additional projects to be funded by these appropriation carryovers. Speaking, Engineering and Planning Director, Mike Craft.
Welcome, good to see you.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I was hesitant to come back. It was pretty nice, but I brought the weather back with me, so it's not quite as cold when I, before we left, so. This is pretty, pretty cut and dry. We, the controller decided to do each individual appropriation for Local Road and Street, Wheel Tax, MVH, and that's fine. You can pass them individually onto Second Reading as you like, but I'm going to kind of lay out where we're at, so that you can just go ahead and make those motions after I'm done, if you'd like. So I won't tell you how to do your procedure, but I wouldn't wrap them all up in one, since she divided them out, so. But obviously, the majority of this money was for community crossing. These were our matching dollars. And as several of you may know, we're still completing the 2024 Community Crossing. We're doing race in boots, which there was a lot of sidewalks on that before we can even do the paving. So instead of trying to do anything last year, or do anything early this year, with the MVH fund, the way that the county distributes to us, there are funds that go right up until December, so we wanted to make sure that we had all, everything that we could get from the county already in there before I came back and asked you for that money, rather than doing it at the beginning of the year, knowing we may not have the full amount from the county. Same thing with the other Local Road and Street and MVH. We don't get all the funding while my seasons are still going, so it kind of ends up at the end of the year, which always tails into not being able to use that money. So henceforth, we look at carrying it over. And the reason why we're this far into the season, before I'm at, before I asked for it, talking with Linda, she was dealing with some things to do, close out all the books, and I didn't want to disrupt her trying to get these total numbers, so I just waited until she was done. So I'd be glad to entertain any of the questions from any of the following appropriations, and then you can take them one by one as you'd like.
This seems like a no-brainer. I mean, what if these wouldn't pass? What does that mean?
That means that I would take what I've got this year to pay for last year, and then where we've already accepted money for community crossing, we'd come to you and ask you for more money. We don't want to do that.
I just want to, because sometimes when people watch and they don't know, they inner works, they're like, well, what does this mean? So I just want people to hear that, what the effect would be if this didn't go through, so.
One way or the other, the contractor's done the work, and we'll figure out how to pay them, so. The money is there, it's just been, I just, I didn't drag my feet, I just wanted to make sure Linda was good with her stuff.
All right, thank you. Vice President Fordice.
Yeah, I've got a comment on this, but some people don't know, possibly the public is that these funds are non-reverting. So, and what that means is, is what he didn't use last year, it stays in there for him to be able to pay the next season if he runs out of paving time, or season, or whatever. So all these funds, most of all of them are non-reverting, so that money stays in his fund just exclusively for this. So that's why he's coming now and asking for those funds. The new funds will pay for the new paving. Correct, Mike?
Yeah, correct. And it's, yeah, you're absolutely right. It's not a general fund budget that reverts back to the general fund. This stays in until we draw it back out, so, or use it.
Thank you. Any other council members? All right, I take a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to pass additional appropriation 06-2025 to Second Reading, Public Hearing.
Second.
Motion by Vice President Fordice, second by Councilman Brunner. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. Additional appropriation 6-2025 has passed and goes to Second Reading, Public Hearing at the next council meeting. Moving into additional appropriation 7-2025, MVH Road Repair, First Reading. I'll go and take care of this, because we're going to be reading the same stuff. An additional, or just an appropriation appropriating certain funds in the amount of four hundred and five thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-four cents for MVH Road Repair. And copy and paste everything from the last one. It's the exact same thing. We're just literally going to, we have to do it one by one, so if there's no other discussion, I'd take a motion.
Mr. President, I move we pass additional appropriation 7-2025 to Second Reading, Public Hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Klein, second by Vice President Fordice. Any comment? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, additional appropriation 7-2025 will go to Second Reading, Public Hearing at the next council meeting. Moving into additional appropriation 8-2025, Local Road and Street, First Reading, another appropriation appropriating certain funds in the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents for Local Road and Street. Again, copy and paste, same thing. I would take a motion.
Mr. President, I move we pass additional appropriation 8-2025, Second Reading, Public Hearing.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Klein, second by Councilman Witten. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. Additional appropriation 8-2025 passes, goes to Second Reading, Public Hearing at the next council meeting. And additional appropriation 9-2025, Wheel Tax, First Reading, another appropriation for certain funds in the amount of five hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the Wheel Tax. Same, copy and paste, same thing, and I would entertain a motion.
Trying to give someone else a chance. Ms. Chairman, I move we pass additional appropriation 9-2025, Second Reading, Public Hearing.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Klein, a second by Councilman Witten. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. Yes. Additional appropriation. Lost my spot for a second here. Geez, there's a lot of them. I almost said five. Nine dash twenty twenty-five passes, goes to second reading, public hearing at the next council meeting. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think we're, I think that's all we need.
You're done with me. I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it, buddy.
All right, moving on to General Ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty-five, recertifying council election districts. Get this pulled up here. So for those that aren't aware, every ten years, we have a census in America, and part of Indiana law is that after those census, you are supposed to recertify or redistrict your governmental entity. Currently, we have six districts represented by six council members and then three at-large, which cover the entire city. So usually, this is what have been done by now, but COVID, hate to say that, but COVID had its impact in 2020 and delayed a lot of the census results, and there was a lot of grace and mercy in, in getting this done and approved, but there is a deadline. The deadline's at the end of this month. Otherwise, you risk lawsuits, and those are going to get costly. So I have been working with a gentleman by name of David Shelton. He is the city clerk over in Knox County, and met him through some other channels, and he is really good at doing this, and he does it for free. And he offers his services just as, just goodwill to other communities around the state, and he offered to do it for us. It's not overly difficult. I have learned a lot in this process, and I think, well, I think next time I could probably do this now that he has shown us. So first off, I want to give credit David Shelton and give the numbers. So what happens is the census, we have the total population of the city that comes from the census. We have six districts, and the goal of recertifying or redistricting is to have as much equal representation. It's basically a math equation, right? You take the total population divided by six districts, and you want to have those populations as close as possible. There is a little variance that's allowed. The average that they want to see is around 10% or less. We are at 11.6, and, you know, his opinion and others has been, that's within the rule of, of thumb for the 10% range. And so just the, for, for each council member can hear, District One has 4,361 residents, District Two, 4,891, District Three, 4,659, District Four, 4,763, District Five, 4,727, and District Six has the most, and 4,909. And so you add all those up and you divide it by six, and that's 4,718.33. Then you take the most populous, subtract the least populous, and the difference is 548. Then you take that remaining number and divide it by the target population. So, so you take 548 divided by 4,718.33, because that's the average of, of all the six, and that equals 11.6. So just wanted to give you guys the math and not just me say, yep, we're good. That's how they come up to this formula. This formula comes to that number. The current population deviation is appropriate to not redistrict at this time. There's no set number in state code, but the rule of thumb is around 10%, and it's close enough to not warrant confusing voters by changing districts. So the recommendation was to just recertify our council election districts. So any questions? Councilman Klein.
I don't know if I have a question, and I'm going to vote for this on first reading because it needs to go to a public hearing. I'm glad you explained that, because I had gone back, and I'm not volunteering to do any redistricting duty, just to get that on the record. I'm glad you explained that, that it's based on, because I looked up 2019, that was most competitive and most voters of recent elections, and these are the 2019 ward voting totals, just for whatever it's worth. In Ward One, there were 546 votes cast. In Ward Two, there was 1,324. Ward Three, 575. Ward Four, 581. Ward Five, 401. And Ward Six, 456. We may not have the population deviation, but we have voting deviation. Maybe that tells us we need to do a better job of getting voters out and giving them a reason to vote. But I'm, I thank you for that explanation because I had no idea how that was done. Now, it was far too much math for me to con, and, and thank you.
I'm not going to lie, you know, at first I was like, I don't even know where to start. And like I said, I, all credit to David Shelton explaining all this. I had the email. I can forward it to any of you that want to see what, what he gave, but, you know, I appreciate your point on the voting. Now, keep in mind, this could include juveniles, elderly, you know, there's nothing, obviously, the census, we don't have to, we don't look at age on that census. That would get really, really difficult to decipher, okay, how many voters and where, and then the next election, that could change, right? You get a different block of voters that wants to vote for a certain candidate that maybe live in their neighborhood, right? So that can vary. So I appreciate that, but it is a good point. Out of all these people, this is including brand-new babies all the way to 100 years old, so hopefully, we can get some more voters, but that's where we're at. So, you know, the, I'll read the executive summary. This is, you know, something that I had obviously proposed. It's just, the city is either required to redistrict or recertified and based on the census, and like I said, deviation's 11.6, and I already kind of read some of that executive summary, so. Any other questions or comments? Yep, Councilman Kane.
Just, just a comment. So I would have thought that possibly there should have been a committee formed, and this would have been discussed in committee, and a recommendation from the committee not, either to redistrict or not to redistrict, and that would have come down from the committee to the full council, instead of an outside entity from Mr. Shelton saying, hey, we don't need to do anything. I think that we need to bring that down to our local level and for us to make that decision as a full council, coming from a recommendation from a committee. Just my comment. Thank you.
I 100% agree with you, and full transparency, I didn't realize that this was something we had to do until about a month and a half ago, and it's come to my attention that this was proposed, I don't know, a couple of years ago or two years ago, and it was decided at the time, the power of the B, to not address it. That's at least what was told to me. I'm not saying that's 100% fact. I was not actually aware of this until David Shelton actually brought it up to a meeting that I was at, and he said, oh, have you guys, do you know about the deadline, and do you know about recertifying? I'm like, nope, no idea. You know, you, you take this position and there's, you don't know what you don't know. So I agree with you 100%. The problem, and, and I hate this, and I feel like we have to rush it a little bit. I'm glad the numbers landed where they did. I think next time we need to do that, so long as we remember and we're all in the council, but we, the, the state deadline is the end of this month, and so like we're up against the wall here. I would love to, next time, knowing that we have to do this, spend a couple of months after the census, start evaluating that data, and really dig in and, and take a look if that's something you want to do at the time. And to be truthful, we could still do it even after, if we were to pass this, we could still look at it for possibly next time, however the population might change. I do think the city has changed with the applied elimination. We have maybe less houses and population shifts, and, and good, the goal actually would really, ideally, in a perfect world, 0%, right? If we could just almost get it exactly even and maybe even look at voter turnout and distribute that evenly as well. So I 100% agree with you, and I appreciate that comment. I hope next time that we have more time and our back isn't up against the wall. Councilman Klein.
I'm going to make a motion, we send General Ordinance 12-2025 to the Rules Committee.
Okay. You, so if we were to send it to a Rules Committee. What's that? If we get to the end of the month, we're, we're just risking a lawsuit. That's all I'm saying. There is an organization that is watching this, and actually, they've already reached out to the mayor and myself, kind of, we'll politely say breathing down our neck, that, hey, have you done this? I've gotten a voicemail about it from this organization that, that's like their thing. That's their watchdog, and I really support that idea. I really want to do it. I just don't want to risk taxpayer dollars in a lawsuit, that's all.
How long, and Council Harker, maybe you can tell me this. Recertification is good for how long?
It should be till the next census. The next census would be 2030.
That long? Okay.
Yes.
So actually, here, here's the advantage we have, because this has taken so long. I mean, we're five years after this probably should have happened, and so really, we've got a shorter amount of time. We've got five more years once that census comes out. If we're all, if any of us are also in the council at the time, at that point, then we can recertify or redistrict instead of waiting a whole 10 years. So we only have five years to get through that, but, you know, being that the number, if this number was 15 or 20, we definitely, we would just have to say, give us mercy. We got to work through this, but the fact that this number is right around that rule of thumb, you know, it's my opinion, we just move forward. And then at the next census, the council at that time, spend more time and, and separate this out. Just my opinion. But, you know, if you want to send it to a committee, you know, others that feel supported, you're, you know, there's obviously a motion you can make. I would, you're welcome to make a motion, and if not, then. Okay, I thought it was a recommendation. I didn't hear a motion. Was that a motion then? Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm just, I'm just not sure what that committee would, would do at this point.
We can have this argument later. I'll withdraw the motion.
And again, I apologize. I feel like I'm the messenger here, like, you know, literally, he just sent this, not even two weeks ago, I got this information, and he hurried up. Yeah, and, and. Hey, hold on. Eric, can you turn your mic on? I want people at home to hear.
I, I got that notification on an email, too. As a matter of fact, she called me on the phone also.
Yeah.
And said that you realize you guys only have till June 30th, and if you don't, then you can substantiate fines and every council member loses their pay effective June 30th.
That's part of that.
Our, our pay stops, plus she told me it was Peru or Logan Sport that it incurred fines.
It was Anderson.
Anderson, that it incurred fines, and she was going to call all the council people, but she said I was the only one that answered, but I, I sent those emails to, I believe, the mayor and Marty and Nick, I believe.
I responded to her. She let the voicemail and sent me an email.
So that, that's the only thing, is, is that we're about out of time, and it should have been addressed before this, but, you know, we didn't know about it because the last council, Mike, I think you brought it up on the last council, the last administration, that we needed to address this, and it was, didn't get addressed.
Yeah, I hate it.
Thank you.
Well, then I'll make a motion that we pass General Ordinance 12-2025 to second reading and public hearing.
Second.
All right, I got a motion by, hold on one second. I'll get you a second. We got a motion by Councilman Klein, a second by Councilman Calgill. I have to address that. Any discussion?
Yes, I would just like, it would be nice if we could get a copy of what each of those districts look like now compared to what they looked like before. Can we do that?
I don't have a copy. Well, it's the same. I mean, we're recertifying, which means we're keeping the exact same way, so we're not changing anything. This is just saying we're keeping that.
I mean, obviously, they can't be the exact same numbers.
Oh, as far as numbers, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, are those available?
Probably, the clerk's office probably have to find that and find that old motion.
I think it would be very interesting to see what those numbers look like.
Yeah, that would be a request the, the clerk's office at some point, if they would have an opportunity, go back and find that from 2000, probably 11, I imagine, when she's got time, yeah. But no, I, yeah, it'd be interesting to see.
I don't need to have it tomorrow at noon, but I would just like to see that. Thank you.
Nope, that's fine. I understand. Any other comment? We have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion?
I have one comment.
Yes, go ahead.
In the ordinance itself, it says we have to do it before November 1st, 2025, and you guys are saying June 30th, 2025? So is the ordinance correct, or is the June 20, June 30th, 2025, the deadline for doing the public hearing?
June is the deadline, June 30th.
Yes, it's to have the ordinance passed by June 30th.
Okay, then I would say that third paragraph says November 1st of the actual ordinance. I just want to make sure we're approving the correct ordinance with the right language in it, because otherwise, that could throw us back out and start again.
Well, I mean, yeah, even if it says the deadline is that, if we pass it by June 30th, we're good, so it's not going to substantially change what we're doing, but I appreciate you catching that. I must have read right over that. Just my brain says June 30th, so, because I know that's the date. You could amend it, but that's just more, I think, more of a guideline. It's maybe incorrect, but it doesn't change the result of what we have to do at the end of the day, but.
Well, my only concern was if we've already got a, a group looking at it, and if that makes sure that doesn't do anything substantially to us so that they can come back and come at us because our language was incorrect. And again, I know we can adjust it. I just wanted it to be correct.
Well, I had Marty research it, and he came up with June 30th also. Is that correct, Marty? Thank you. I, I made sure, checked with legal on it. Whichever ordinance that you showed me. But either way, if we get it done before.
Go ahead.
So can we, on this?
On this motion, amend the ordinance at the same time on the, on the motion to say June the 30th? Can we do that, please?
Yeah, basically, it's that third paragraph to, basically, for those that are listening at home or not seeing what we're seeing, it says, whereas Indiana Code 3-5-10-7.1 requires municipalities that did not redistrict or recertify their districts following the 2020 decennial census to do so before November 1st, 2025, and then it continues on some, some other language. So, yeah, probably would be better to err on the side of caution and amend that then.
So I'll withdraw the original motion and would make a motion that we pass Ordinance 12-2025 to second reading and public hearing with the amendment that in the third paragraph, whereas Indiana Code such and such requires, we change the date to June 30, 2025, striking November 1, 2025.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor now. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kane. Any other discussion? Appreciate you guys' patience on this. Thanks for working through it with me. All right, Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. The amended General Ordinance 12-2025 will move to a second reading, public hearing at the next council meeting. And moving on to 2025 CF1 forms, residential and commercial CF1 forms.
The Marion City Council is required to review CF1 forms on, on an annual basis and either approve or deny them. The CF1 forms are submitted by entities or persons that are receiving a tax abatement to ensure compliance in order to continue receiving the tax abatement for another year. Speaking, Council President Nick McKinley.
At the time of year, again, just as a friendly reminder, the CF1 forms are compliance forms for people that have received tax abatements in the city and continue to receive abatement based on their abatement schedule, and every year, they are required to resend that. As we received those forms, I was sending them over to Chuck Binkert, who is the Executive Director of the Grant County Growth Council. He helped us last year, and he helped review those as well, second set of eyes. If there were any issues, he would reach out to that organization and have them make those changes. So this year's, from what I understand, all came in with no issues. I will say Chuck wasn't able to be here. He's on vacation, but he did say that all the ones that were submitted has his full recommendation. He didn't find any issues, and that he requested that we approve the ones that were submitted. So I don't remember last year, Marty, if we, or if anyone else remembers, if we approved these all individually, one at a time, or in one fell swoop. I'm not sure. Does anyone remember?
I think, I think we did them one at a time because there were some. I think, I think we did them one at a time, because there were some that were sent back. And if we had passed them all at one, en masse, we wouldn't have caught anything. Yeah, a couple come in late, a couple had swirly numbers or no numbers, I do remember that. But, if these have been approved and vetted by the people we've trusted, it's, it's like they're giving us a do-pass recommendation. Is that what I understand?
Well, I mean, it's still us as the governing bodies' decision on whether we think they're in actual compliance. Now, what Chuck Binkert, what I asked him to do is just to make sure the forms were completed in compliance and filled out properly. Not so much, are they living up to what they said they were gonna do?
Mr. President, I believe these went to committee last year, and the committee then determined which ones were in compliance with, and then they came back to the council, the ones that had been, were in compliance with, were voted on, I believe, together. And then, as the other ones were then completed and brought back later, they were approved individually.
I think that was two years ago, though.
Yeah, that's correct.
I don't think, I thought, I don't think we went to committee last year on this, did we?
I think we did.
Yeah, we did.
Because I know we got Chuck, Chuck involved at some point.
I'm, as chairman, alleged chairman of that alleged committee, I don't, I don't think, we talked, but I don't think they went to committee. I think we, not deferred to, but included Chuck as, as a whole.
Yeah, I think that, I don't, I'm not sure we went to committee last year.
I know we did two years ago.
That may be correct, too. I'm not, I'm not sure whether it was last year or the year before.
I'm thinking that was two, because last year, we included Chuck in kind of a group committee of the whole.
That could be the case, we should probably look at the minutes. But, the council could do it either way.
And, and honestly, if, if you've gone through these, I've looked at them as they came in, as they came back, you know, it's still the council's prerogative, if, if there's an issue that council member has with one of them, and we have a discussion, we can always move that to the next meeting, too. So, if you, if you see one, you're going, I'm not so sure, we can either move it to the next meeting, could pull one or a couple out and send it to a committee. But, I know, I remember Councilman Klein and I spoke last year about, do we even need a compliance committee, right? That discussion when we have Chuck as an entity that has the time and ability to reach out to these organizations. And he did help us last year. And I think the corrections that were made last year, and the communication he had with those companies, helped this year because they actually submitted the reforms properly. Because he did show them, hey, this is how you fill it out.
Mr. President, I, I, I mean, I agree with you, and I'm glad Chuck's here, and I trust Chuck and everything, but with it being our name on it at the end, I think that if, if, if it does go to committee, at least to the chairman, I feel like somebody from the council ought to look at this, though, before we...
Yeah, and again, Chuck, Chuck's request and ask from me was just to make sure the forms were completed. It is on us, it says it right on the form, it's us to make that full decision. I think where, last year, we changed things up is, historically, it was the committee that just approved it, not the full council. Well, according to IC Code, it has to come to the full governing body. So, I think that's where last year, we changed things up. Chuck, you know, we, we deviated from our previous practices last year, probably to fall in better compliance. But, as far as how we move forward, I'm okay either way. You know, may, they had a deadline to submit it, we don't necessarily have a deadline to approve it, other than the, you know, there are certain filings at the county that they need to start filing for their, their property taxes. And so, the longer these take, this is no pressure, the longer these take, the longer that could delay that process at the county for these organizations. But, I'm open to anybody else's opinions on which direction they'd like to see this go. I personally have read through all of these, and I remember them from last year, and looked at their numbers, and I don't have a problem approving them today, but that's just my one vote.
Yeah, as a compliance person, I looked at them as well. And I didn't see any red flags, whether I misread or overlooked, that could be, but nothing said, nothing smacked me upside the head.
I did as well, I looked at them all and didn't see anything red flag either.
I appreciate that, yeah. I just want the, the general consensus of the council, which direction they want to go. So, if, let's just say, if you feel compelled that you think that you should go to, all go to a committee, you know, be willing to entertain that, or what we could do, if you're okay moving forward, is, and again, this is, it's a one-time vote, so this isn't like going to a second reading public hearing as soon as we approve, these are approved. So, if the decision's made today, we could vote for all of these, some of them, and then, the ones we approved today are done, and if we want to carve some out to look deeper next time, at the next meeting, we do that as well.
Since the deadline isn't that crucial for us not to knock anybody else's portion of the process, what about, we table this until the next meeting, so those who haven't had a chance to look at these and, and see if anything smacks them, will have a chance, and we can do this, address this at the next meeting?
That's your opinion?
I mean, I'm just...
Vice President Fordice, maybe, yep.
Do, do you remember receiving an email from the Grant County Treasurer on some of the residential tax abatements that were qualified?
I did, and...
Because I've got, I got that same email. And it was like four residentials that they said were not qualified, and the abatement that we had approved was rejected. So, on residentials, there were, I know, four for a fact, that they had rejected because they said they didn't qualify for residential tax abatements. So, that's the only thing I want to make sure and clarify on going through the CF-1 forms, is that the county kicked them out last time, and sent us an email.
Yeah, I did, uh...
I know they sent it to you, because I got it.
I, I did speak to Michael Hots on that as well. Forwarded that information over, and he disagreed with their opinion.
So, the residential homeowners can debate it?
Well, I mean, here's, I mean, and Marty, you know, stop and correct us if we're wrong or have an opinion on this. Our vote is still a vote, it's still a vote. If we approve it, we approve it on our end. Now, what the county does, I, I, I don't know where that needs to be sorted out on the legal side. So, I, my opinion is that we, if we support this abatement, because we originally supported the abatement, we're living up to our word that you're eligible for this, I, my opinion is that we still vote for it, if you're wanting to vote for it. And then, it's, it's in our minutes, it's approved by us. Beyond that, if the homeowner has an issue, then that's, to me, seems like a legal issue with the interpretation from the county side and what they're doing, and need to take it up with the county. Whereas, our, our corporate counsel for the city disagrees. I don't know, Marty, any thoughts on that?
No, the council just needs to vote on its process, it can't control how the auditor processes things on, on its end.
Go ahead, Councilman Marshall.
Marshall, yeah. Can, can you clarify what Chuck's role is? Because he's just collecting the forms. I, I understood when we put him in that position to be involved with that, that he was also in some way looking at the material written in there, and providing some assurance that, yes, these are filled out properly, and they're, they're, they're in compliance. And you're saying he's not involved with the compliance end of it?
So, I'm just trying to be very careful, because he's not a council member.
Or, at the very least, I would have expected him to say, I've looked these over, and there are three of them that I think you guys should focus on, or something, some kind of advice in that capacity. Otherwise, I don't know what his role is.
I understood this, that we were looking at his, he, he was giving us an expert opinion on these forms, what's in them, what did, and that he's not passing on them, but he's giving us a do-pass, or pass these, take a look at those.
Right.
That, that he was, he was our expert witness, I guess. He was our expert, getting expert opinion.
Saying otherwise, I would assume that everything is appropriate.
Yeah, I'm comfortable voting for them, but if not everybody has looked at them, that's putting them in an awkward position to vote for something they haven't studied.
Okay, so, let me, let me clarify something here, I just want to, I'm just trying to be careful with my words, because I don't want it to come across as, well, Chuck said yes, let's just blindly vote for it. That's what I'm trying to be avoiding. What I'm saying is that it's still ultimately is on us to ensure that. He did, and I didn't send this out, I didn't feel like I need to, he did send a list of all of the ones that you got a list on, and made a column, and yes, they all had signatures, that was an issue, and yes, they're all in compliance. Your interpretation of compliance is different, but his professional recommendation was that these are in compliance with what the original ask was, and what we have asked them to do to get that tax abatement. With him not being here, I just don't want to extend out that opinion any further than it is our duty, at the end of the day, as a governing body, to say, yes, we agree, this matches what they agreed to do in that original tax abatement. So, yes, he did say compliance, and his opinion is that these, in his opinion, are past the test.
Whereas, before he was involved, we had them that didn't even put any information down at all. So, he would have filtered that and said, look, no, we, we need to get this, you know?
Some people didn't know how to, I mean, last year, we ran into it, some people didn't know what numbers to put where. And so, then we're reading them and going, you know, are they even in compliance? Because they, they didn't know what numbers to put in what column. So, his benefit in this is he's actually helped educate some of them that fill out these CF-1 forms and go, this is how you need to do it, these are the numbers you need to put here, which honestly, it's made the process so much smoother. The goal last year was to streamline this process for us. This year, in my opinion, it's been streamlined, he did an excellent job. Every time I'd send him one, he went right to work on it, and did his due diligence, sent back his opinions, which we forwarded on to everyone. And, and that's where we're at, just trying to streamline this and not make this overly cumbersome.
I have one more question, Mr. President. The other question that I have was, previously, J.G. Bowers had a tax abatement on his property, out on 16th Street, I believe, they call that 16th Street, J.G. Bowers Construction Company. Well, Peerless Machine on 3rd Street, and J.G. Bowers switched properties, or ownership of properties, let me say. Peerless Machine moved to J.G. Bowers' property, J.G. Bowers moved to Peerless Machine property. The tax abatement stays with the property. So, did Peerless Machine take over the tax abatement, or did J.G. Bowers try to transfer it? I brought this up to Chuck, he said that he would look into it, this had been about four months ago when I heard they were moving, and he hadn't got back to me. So, I do know for a fact that the tax abatement stays with the property. So, I was just wondering if that was the case, and since they switched properties, did Peerless Machine inherit that tax abatement on that property until it expires? Or, did J.G. Bowers try to transfer it to a different location? Because they can't do that.
Great question, I think we'd have to look at the original resolution on that one, it was Resolution 6-2020, so it would require a, a second look at that resolution. I ain't familiar with the property switch, but I couldn't answer that question.
Yeah, and he was gonna get back to me and didn't. And I just brought it to his attention, because when they switched properties, I asked him, I said, I know the tax abatement stays with that property, he said, yes, with that owner, that property. He can sell the property, but the tax abatement stays with the property.
On, on J.G. Bowers' form for this, for the personal property, anyway, the location of property is 1820 West 2nd.
So, he's...
That's the former Peerless.
He's transferred it. He's trying, yeah, you can't transfer.
Or maybe he's just not aware.
That's on the personal property, though. That is on the personal property abatement, he may be able to transfer that, I'm not sure. I don't know, there's, there's gonna be a distinction between real and personal property, potentially. I'm unsure of the issue, Mr. Fordice, I looked at, at the applications and was aware of the switch, and had the same questions that you did. So, I'm looking forward to trying to find some answers.
But, the personal property was installed at the...
Correct, I agree.
Yeah, so, that's the only thing that I want to make sure that, if he's changed addresses on that, and taken that abatement with him, I don't think he can take that abatement unless he reapplies for a new abatement, is what I'm saying on the address on a commercial property.
Which that one, we don't have that one, the only one that was submitted was a personal property request.
But, he switched addresses.
So, you know, if there's an, if it's an unknown, then whether a personal property abatement transfers or not, then we probably want to find that out. I would, I don't want to guess on that.
I, I just, I don't want to, you know, pass something, and then it, because I did bring that up to Chuck, to Chuck, and...
All right, so, I mean, as far as the other list goes, I mean, there's, it's my opinion that I, I would be happy to approve the ones that everyone's 100% comfortable approving. And if there's any, like I said, that we want to pull out and move to the next meeting, then we have the right to do so. Anyone have any other comments? So, the J.G. Bowers one is included in this list. So...
There are two personal property abatements.
Let me look at this again here. Yeah, so...
And that was on new equipment installed in that site.
You know, if you guys don't have anything else, I would entertain a motion to approve the CF-1 forms submitted, except for the J.G. Bowers CF-1 forms. Moving that to the next meeting, I would take that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, so I got a motion by Councilman Calgill to approve all of the CF-1 forms, except for the J.G. Bowers CF-1 forms. And we'll move that to the next meeting to give time to review that. I have a second by, was that Vice President Fordice that did that?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. Thank you, and I just want to say, for the audience out there, and those watching them, this is why we're a council, and I hope you see us at work. This is why a council's better than one. So, I appreciate all of your opinions and, and sorting this out. Moving on to the Grant County Visitors Bureau, so, I just love getting surprises, you know, I got surprised with the redistricting a month and a half ago, and then about, I don't know, two, three weeks ago, surprised with that the Marion Common Council actually gets an appointment to the Grant County Visitors Bureau. And I found that out directly from the Director of the Visitors Bureau, was in a meeting, and somehow that came up, and I was like, oh, didn't know we had one appointment. And we have not had an appointment, and I guess it's been years since we had a representative on that Visitors Bureau. Not only the City Council, but I found out the County Council, I think, as well. So, I did call President Greg Kitz, and informed him, and he was happy to hear that. So, with that being said, we do get one appointment, it is based on their bylaws on the Visitors Bureau, it is a two-year appointment. There's no set time, we have to start it. What I would like to do, and I've been working with Deputy Clerk Ayesha, is to submit or to put out an advertisement to advertise for resumes, I put that in the executive summary. Sorry, I'll just go ahead and read the executive summary, it's just, it was discovered, we get one board appointee. Basically, it says the City Council is now accepting resumes, be considered for the appointed position, two-year appointment that will run July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2027. Again, this isn't an ordinance, this is just me writing the executive summary. If you guys agree, disagree, and want to have a different timeframe, we're open to that. And then, I've just put in there's a deadline to submit resumes, is June 24th. That allows us to receive resumes before the deadline for the agenda, so that way, we can get those resumes out to all the councils. So that way we can get those resumes out to all the council members and we can make a vote or decision on the July 1st council meeting. And whoever gets voted that day would immediately begin. And I have some other information as well, happy to share on what that commitment looks like. I will be also sharing it on the, my Councilman Facebook page. I'm going to have the, ask the city to also share that on the city website and through those social media channels as well.
Since this is a city council appointment, does the person need to live within the city?
Yes, it does, they do, yeah.
Just making sure that...
Yep, so I guess while we're... Let me get this pulled up here. Sorry, this is all, it's all moved very quickly. I'll just say, the positional overview, as a commissioner, you're actually a commissioner for the Grant County Convention and Visitors Bureau. You play a key role in promoting tourism and supporting the growth of local attractions. Commissioners meet publicly four times per year and are also expected to participate in one of the following committees, marketing, attraction development, I'm sorry, attraction development or finance, each of which meets three times annually. This is a two-year volunteer commitment aimed at enhancing the visibility and economic impact of Grant County as a destination. So this information was texted me by Haley Anderson, who's the director, that we would also include some of this in that advertisement as well, so people know what they're signing up for. Anybody that would submit a resume, I would reach out to and again, reiterate what that commitment looks like and make sure they know what they're putting their name in the hat for. And then as a council, then we can then make the decision as a whole and decide who we want to represent the council. It's not limited to, I mean, obviously you have to be over 18, live in the city limits. And it's, other than that, it's not limited to anybody else. And it could even be a council member if you really wanted to put your name in the hat.
I nominate Mayor Moreau.
Yeah. He gets his own appointees, so...
Well, then he should serve on that board.
So anyways, resumes can be turned into the city clerk's office or emailed to councilpresident@cityofmarion.in.gov. As those resumes are received, they'll be immediately dispersed to council members, so you have time to reach out and, and communicate with anybody that might put their resume in. Councilman Brunner?
Is that a paid position?
It is not, volunteer.
Okay. You don't want it now, there you go.
Yep, no, not a paid position, but a very, very important position, especially as we develop the city and this county. But we want somebody to represent the council and be maybe our eyes and ears and, and contribute to that Visitors Bureau. So any other questions? I mean, it's not a vote. Just want some, make sure everyone knows what we're doing. And if you disagree with what we're doing or want to change the time from July 1st to August 1st, whatever, I'm open to any suggestions. Great, I take the silence as approval. So anyways, yes, so this, you could take this as a public announcement of an open vacancy. That's it I have for the agenda, some announcements, just the next citywide cleanup for District 3 is July 19th. We'll again make that announcement a couple of times before now and then. And then the grand reopening and ribbon cutting for the Matter Park Zero to Five Year Old Playground. Somehow that date got left off. I had the date on there, somehow I got it off of there. I don't remember what date that is. But anyways, stay tuned to your social media channels. If you really want to know when that grand reopening and ribbon cutting of the Matter Park Zero to Five Year Old Playground is, download the Marion, My Marion app or the... Is it the 12th, July 12th? Or June 12th, I'm sorry. June 12th, you remember what time? Probably in the middle of the day. I'm just going to say, download the My Marion app and go to the My, the Marion City website or, or the Facebook page. Big announcement, this is a huge announcement for that is the Purple Dino is returning and it's not going away. It was a big to-do on social media, if you're not on there, about the Purple Dino going away. Thank you, Mayor, you're a hero to many, bringing the Purple Dino back. So, you know, it's positive stuff. I like, it's good spirited, positive things about our city, so I appreciate it. Any other announcements?
His daughters made him do it.
Probably, he had some inside influence. So any other council members with announcements?
Yeah, I just got to say, I love having Brain looking over us. That's what he used to do, he did it well. Wish we had more people doing it.
And we'll end with that. I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I got a motion by Vice President Fordice, second by Councilman Whitten. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Yes.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye, I just want to wait to be looking at it.
McKinley?
Yes, the meeting's adjourned.